Good evening and welcome to the Marquette City Commission meeting for Monday, March 26, 2012. Could you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
All right. The flag of the United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. City Clerk, could you please call roll?
Yes, Your Honor. Mayor Protam de Petro.
Here.
Commissioner Neme.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner St. Ange.
Here.
Commissioner Stonhouse.
Here.
And Mayor Kivale.
Here. Commissioners, any changes to the agenda tonight? Commissioner Snyder?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to add a discussion item, if possible. I would like to discuss chickens within the city limits and a little bit of a urban agricultural policy. Not an action item, just a discussion.
Okay. Do we have support? Commissioner De Petro supports. So we'll add that as item number 12, chickens and agriculture. All right. Any other changes? Commissioner Ryan?
I move the agenda to be approved.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Snyder?
Support.
All in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed.
Motion carries. Under announcements, I'm going to rattle off our dwindling list of openings on volunteer committees and boards. Arts and Culture Advisory Committee, we're going to have two openings. Investment Advisory Board, one opening. Local Officers Compensation Commission, four openings. Parks and Rec Advisory Board, two openings. And the Sister City Advisory Committee, two openings. So that's as low as I've seen in five and a half years. How about we get a big push and fill them all up? So anyone with interest, certainly you can go to our website, www.mqtcty.org, and get information, or visit the city manager's office, or pester any one of your commissioners. So that's all I've got for announcements. We're going to move into the agenda, and up first, we've got a presentation regarding the Cliff's Douse site by environmental attorney Rich Baron from Foley Baron and Metzger, and Mylan Kosky from Tri Media. We just actually had a work session downstairs where we met for about an hour and a half on this issue, and these guys are going to give a much briefer presentation. So I'll come back, guys.
Mr. Mayor, my understanding is the number of these slides will also be on the city website if I crack down. You know, we're going to go through at perhaps not warp speed, but with reasonable speed. I'm Rich Baron, attorney from Foley Baron and Metzger, and I'm here as special environmental counsel for the city of Marquette on this one.
Hey, Rich, real quick, is the red light on, on the mic?
Negative.
Can you flip the switch? Perfect.
We're lit. Mylan Kosky is from Tri Media, and he's one of our project managers. Tri Media is the environmental engineering company that's been doing the actual site work itself in terms of monitoring and working with us on recommendations. And Mylan, you're going to be the mouse person, if you would, please, and go ahead and move through the slides. Now, these will project in the back. Is that right? Okay, there we go. Go ahead. So this particular slide simply indicates, and if you can look on the screens, you'll see them, the Cliff's Douse site, portions of the Cliff's Douse property were purchased by the city. The site had a long history of industrial operations, predominantly as a wood distilling factory. Go ahead. These two aerial photos were taken at different times, and what's particularly interesting in these pictures is you'll notice on the screens, you'll see a dark shadow there where Mylan's moving the cursor. There is some type of a discharge to Lake Superior. The one on the left is a discharge from the northern portion of the lake shore, and the picture on the right is from the southern portion of the lake shore. These are pre-existing discharges from plant operations to the lake before the time the city bought the property. After the city purchased the site, there was some environmental investigation that had been going on before the city purchased the site, and after the DEQ, Department of Environmental Quality, received that report, they requested that additional work be done. Next. The city has taken on certain obligations as an owner of the property and certain obligations by contract, and since our firm has been hired, we've been working with the city on making sure the city complies with its regulatory obligations and acting as contact person for the project team with the Department of Environmental Quality, keeping the department posted as to what we planned on doing and seeking their input as part of the guiding process as to how the site should be handled. Right before we got involved, the city received a couple of letters from the Department of Environmental Quality demanding additional work. We've been working through, some of that work was done before our firm was retained, and we've been working through with some of the obligations since that time. The main thing that has been done in terms of the city's perspective, in terms of operations at the site from an environmental point of view, would be groundwater monitoring, plus, as I'll talk about in a moment, some limited site investigation that followed a study that was done in advance so that we weren't just digging willy-nilly across the site. Go ahead. The investigation has proceeded in an iterative fashion. There's been work plans that have been presented to the city commission for approval, presented to the department for discussion at various stages, and then what we've tried to do as a project team is play off the information that was obtained from the various investigations to then determine the appropriate next step. A geophysical survey is one of the discussion items that I mentioned in terms of some of that investigation, where they use some electromagnetic investigation and other techniques to see underneath the ground using radio frequencies and otherwise. One of the difficulties at this site from conducting soil borings, and soil borings are where you punch holes in the ground and you then can take out samples, there's a lot of rubble at the site. There's, you know, concrete foundations, there's other things which impede the ability to go in under the ground and take a soil sample. It's not just like you're dealing with sand or topsoil. So you end up with refusal. You can't go any farther, and it's hard to get a good sample. So the geophysical survey, and if you notice on the right-hand side here, was a way to look into the ground without actually digging into the ground. And if you see, as Mylan moves the cursor here, you can see there's some lines that are going across the picture there. We weren't quite sure what those were, whether they were pipes or trenches that had been filled in, but one of the concepts from an environmental point of view is something called a preferential pathway, where you, we have groundwater contamination and certain levels of soil contamination at this site. And if there's a way for that contamination to move more quickly, it prefers that way. A preferential pathway, for instance, disturbs soil where it's looser or where there is a ditch rather than soil that's all firmly compacted. And so what we were looking for as part of the investigation is to see if there were preferential pathways and to determine what impact those might have on some of the groundwater contamination. As a result of the geophysical investigation that was done by others, we brought in some specialists for that work, they came up with a, the consultant Tri Media came up with a proposed limited site excavation. And they did some test trenches across portions of the site, and if you look here on the bottom, if you follow the cursor, there's a couple little hash marks there where a backhoe was used to literally just dig a trench, to try and ground truth some of the information that was obtained from the geophysical survey, because there's a lot of art and a lot of science associated with interpreting that type of information. As a result of doing some of those test trenches, there were some findings made, and this was an example of part of the limited excavation where we were able to find some source material, and this is some of the tar left over from the wood tar distillation process that contains the same types of materials that are leaching to the groundwater. So as a result of the limited excavation that was done in just one area along some of these pathways where they found some vats, and they found pipe that had tar in it, they were able to remove, Mylan, what was that number, 840?
Eight hundred, approximately 845 tons of material.
Can you just give an example in terms of roughly size of the room, what that would mean?
Sure. The approximate area that, or volume of material that we removed from the site is about 3,500 square feet, and it was taken down to a depth of about, about six feet below grade. So, pretty sizable volume.
So taking a look at the picture here taken by the city manager, you can see that this material is flowable. It's not as flowable as water, but it certainly flows, and you can see how some of that has flowed into the excavation area. One of the things that we did as part of the work session was to bring the city commission current with the activities and some of the findings, and even though we'd already discussed it at other work sessions, the limited site investigation, to talk about what some of the options might be going forward. And those would include groundwater monitoring as other, as well as other types of remedial technologies. As part of this remedial alternatives review, the consultants and the project team looked at various types of things that I'm going to hit on just very briefly, as part of the overall, what might the city do at the site if, in fact, additional work is needed beyond groundwater monitoring? And so one of the remedial alternatives was the limited site excavation, trying to do some more of that. What we want to do is wait and see what type of an impact on groundwater we receive from the excavation that was done. And those levels could fluctuate up, they could fluctuate down, there could be no change from the removal of the source material, but one thing is certain, and that is removing material that has the potential to continue to leach contaminants to the groundwater just helps move the ball forward in terms of overall site closure. So that, that's one possible alternative if we needed to do some additional excavation. Another alternative would be air sparging, where air is bubbled into the groundwater, and then a vacuum is put through wells on the surface to try and pull contaminants out that are picked up by air. There's various pluses and minuses associated with that. All of these remedial alternatives you'll see have a pretty hefty price tag with them, and one of the downsides is, of course, that the technology may not work very well at this particular location based on the subsurface conditions, and that's certainly likely the case with air sparging. A pump-and-treat system is simply pumping out groundwater and then running that contaminated groundwater through some type of a treatment medium. Depending on the contaminants that you're trying to remove, granulated activated carbon, or GAC, is a very common type of way to treat contaminated groundwater. The difficulty with starting a pump-and-treat is you may run that system for a very, very long time. One of the advantages is you can actually change the way groundwater flows underground if you pump out enough of it, causing contaminated groundwater to flow where you've got an extraction well. So it's something that's on the table to consider in the future. A non-permeable barrier or a slurry wall is just a wall. If we look at the outside of the credenza here where the city commission is sitting, if you think of a barrier and groundwater is moving towards the commission, a barrier like that could prevent groundwater from getting further away from the site. The downside is that it doesn't actually do any treatment other than perhaps relying on natural attenuation or natural breakdown upstream of that or up gradient, but it is an alternative that we discussed. Next. You can combine that technology in a funnel and gate type of scenario where if you had, instead of just a solid barrier, you had a doorway or a large doorway partway through that, and as the contaminated groundwater migrates towards that center, as it goes through that more concentrated area, you could have some type of treatment medium or a treatment cell in the ground. It's another technology that's at least on the table for discussion if, in fact, something else needs to be done in the future. In situ, in the site, bioremediation using microbes, little bugs to help break down materials is something that's considered. That can work very well at certain sites. The difficulty is that you're injecting materials into the ground. It works reasonably well when you're dealing with groundwater contamination. It works much less well when you're injecting materials into the soil because there's no way to get the enhancers or the bugs to the material that you need to break down if it's not in the right spot. Groundwater monitoring is something that the city is doing now as part of the obligations in dealing with the MDEQ. That has a much lower price tag. The downside of groundwater monitoring is it's not actually a remedial technology in the sense of actually cleaning up groundwater, but the state has various criteria levels, and depending on what the level of contamination is in the groundwater, you don't have to clean up to non-detecting, you don't have to clean up just to background levels. So you may be able to pursue an administrative closure after you have sufficient monitoring data to then make a conclusion and make an argument to the department. So ultimately, the project team recommended that we continue with that obligation, and in fact, with any of those other remedies that I mentioned a moment ago, there would still be continued groundwater monitoring. These are just a quick view of some of the various costs, and they all have fairly hefty price tags. If it does the job, that's one thing. There are no guarantees when you're dealing with unknown subsurface conditions, and it's not the recommendation of the project team that the city spend a very large sum of money right now until we see what continued monitoring reveals. Mylan, could you just talk for a moment about how the groundwater, the area being monitored has changed over time?
Sure. Through discussions with DEQ, they've been on board with us decreasing the frequency of groundwater monitoring as well as reducing the number of wells that they're requiring us to monitor, and so we've been able to save the city some money by reducing those actions.
Next slide. One of the things that may impact how the site is treated is what the city determines is really the best use on their wish list of best uses for the property. As an example, if the city decided that the best use for that property is to put up another factory, then your soil issues would be different than if the city decided it's really best to have a daycare and allow little children to dig into the dirt with all the rubble and shards and, you know, anything else that might be there. So part of the planning process will determine, will be based on, in part, the direction from the city commission and the city residents as to what the best goals would be for that site in conjunction with the data that we're obtaining that would help narrow down some of the options that we might pursue. I think that's sufficient for a highlight of the meeting that we had and just to generally give an overview of where we stand now. Are there any additional questions from the city commission or comments?
I don't see any. Again, I'll thank you, and had anyone gone to our earlier meeting, it was, all this was described very in-depth, so we appreciate your continued good work on our behalf. So thank you, and thanks for coming up. All right. Next up is a presentation on the Market Housing Commission, and we've got Chairman Dottie Lewis here. Welcome, Dottie.
Okay, there we go. Okay. Well, I'm just here to present information about the Market Housing Commission tonight and talk a little bit about it. It was founded in 1966. It was, it's chartered under the laws of the state of Michigan to provide and administer affordable housing programs for citizens of the city of Marquette. The Market Housing Commission provides oversight to 253 public housing units within the city limits, and then they also administer a Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program, which includes 50 Housing Choice vouchers that go out to people that live in outlying, in the city and outlying areas. Our mission statement is to provide safe, sanitary, affordable housing to low and moderate income individuals and families, and to promote personal responsibility and self-sufficiency to residents while maintaining fiscal integrity, and also to provide adequate and affordable housing, economic opportunity, and a suitable living environment free from discrimination. This is the Pine Ridge facility, and this is the Lake Superior Village facility. Those are the two facilities that we have. Our board meeting is held on the fourth Tuesday of every month at 5:00 PM in the community room at the Pine Ridge Apartments. We are a five-member governing board appointed by the city commission. And the board members are President Carolyn Jordan, she's here tonight, myself, Dottie LaJoy, Vice President. Penny Zoller isn't here. Emily Coyne is another one of our commissioners, and Tessa Mattson is our most recent commissioner. And actually, there's only two commissioners that have been on the board for a while. It's a fairly new board and a new executive director, so we're, we're all, we're all new. This is our staff here. Sharon Kivico is Executive Director, Heidi Rosenberg, Executive Assistant for the, and also Housing Choice Voucher Program Coordinator, and Deborah Mackey is the Project Manager, and Jacini Bennett is the Lake Superior Village Administrative Assistant. And then maintenance staff includes Jeff Harry, David Weingard, Randy Lahillier, Lloyd Dupras, and Dave Poland. All of the funding for, for the housing is, is from HUD. There are grants, and I think there's a, is there a cell tower or something on the top, or what? What's that?
Rent.
Rent. Okay, so we receive rent from that. But otherwise, everything, it's, it's all funded by HUD, and I think even grant funds would probably either be Mitch or HUD funded, right? Okay. And so this is some of the things about Pine Ridge here. It's on the east side of city Marquette. I'm sure everyone's familiar with it. The, the tenant base there is really the elderly and disabled and, and low to very low income. It has 140 units with one, two, and three bedrooms. The tenants pay 30% of their income for rent with a $50 minimum for utilities such as gas, electric, water, and sewer, and cable and telephones are not Other amenities include a secure building and free parking, library with computers and free internet access, 24-hour emergency maintenance, onsite Marktram bus with shelter, community room, outdoor seating area, onsite laundry, and it's a non-smoking building except for grandfathered in tenants, and small pets are allowed. Right now, there's a capital improvement project going on. It's a stack replacement project, and so they're going to be working with some, some of the apartments that are directly affected by that, and in the meantime, they'll be improving accessibility to the building and also making three apartments wheelchair accessible, and working with local groups to see that through and make sure that that is going to, is going to happen or that it's going to be compatible. They'll, they'll be overseeing that, those people with, with disabilities themselves. This is a view from the eighth floor. Is it the, okay, yeah, so that's, it's pretty, this actually was kind of a gray day. I mean, actually, it's beautiful from up there. This is the community room, very nice room. And the waitlist, there are 20 applicants on the waitlist, and preference points are given to applicants that are a city of Marquette resident, working family, disabled or elderly, and a student or higher income and/or have a higher income resulting in rent higher than 195 a month. And I, if I have this right, and Sharon, you can correct me here, but I think if they're very low income, then they only pay a minimum or a maximum of $50 a month, and then otherwise, it's, it's, they can pay higher than that. So, and that's desirable. And then there's a six-to-12-month anticipated wait time. And then I should mention, too, that also the tenants in both Lake Superior Village and Pine Ridge have a community service requirement. If they only work 30 hours or less a week, employed for 30 hours or less a week, then they have to provide about 32 hours a month of community service work. And this is Lake Superior Village, North Marquette. It is family-based housing. It has 113 townhouses, and same-income guidelines apply as Pine Ridge. And that is two, three, and four-bedroom units, 24-hour emergency maintenance, free onsite parking, no smoking, laundry hookup in every unit, patio and yard areas, storage sheds, and the youth center run by the YMCA, and onsite, small pets are allowed. And the waitlist is, it's currently open for two, three, and four bedrooms. There are 22 people waiting for a two-bedroom. 12 people are waiting for a three-bedroom. Four people are waiting for a four-bedroom, and the wait time for two bedrooms is three months to a year. Three bedrooms are three to six months, four bedrooms, one to two years, and the wait time is dependent on availability, subject to change. And this is the youth center. How many, Sharon, do we know how many or how many youth attend the, or are in the part of the youth center? No, we don't know? Okay. Okay. Then the Housing Choice Voucher Program, it's also called Section 8, and it provides rental assistance for low-income people, or low-income households who live on privately-owned house, in privately-owned housing. And I, I like this because it doesn't, people are allowed to live wherever they can live then, and where they need to live, you know, what works for, best for them, as we say. Families have more freedom in choosing units. The units must pass a housing quality standard inspection. That is a health and safety inspection. They go through and they make sure that, you know, there's proper lighting, electricity, and water, and no broken windows, and, and those kinds of things. The units can be located anywhere in Marquette County, including the cities of Gwin, Ishbaming, Nagani, and Marquette. Allows households to receive assistance in a unit in a location that works best for them. Rental assistance is tenant-based or portable. So that means they can, it's tied to the family, and the family can go to another municipality, and subsidy follows them. So then basically, we lose that, right? So, okay, so then, you know, ideally, they stay there, stay here, but they, they don't have to. So then, the family pays approximately 30% of their monthly income as a share to their, of their rent to the landlord, and then the Market Housing Commission pays the remaining amount, and this is called the Housing Assistance Payment. And the Housing Choice Voucher Program is currently assisting 43 families in Marquette and outlying areas, not including families with temporary vouchers searching for units to lease that fall under the payment standard and comply with HQS standards. Housing Choice Voucher Program currently has 40 applicants on the waitlist with an anticipated wait time of six to 36 months. And Marquette Housing Commission has served and provided assistance for over 350 families in 2011. And, and applications are available at Pine Ridge or Lake Superior Village, or you can also get them online at the website.
All right. Do we have any questions?
Just out of curiosity, I didn't realize that a government agency authorized people to be grandfathered to smoke. How do you justify that?
Well, I, I, I don't know if I have that answer, but I would think that maybe it was part of the agreement when they moved in, and then, and then maybe it, you know, the, the building became a non-smoking building. However, those people that originally moved in were allowed to smoke at that time and continue to be allowed to smoke, and when they move out, then that, they will no longer be allowed to smoke. The next tenant won't be allowed to smoke.
Well, that was kind of interesting. I never heard of a government grandfathering smoking when they passed a law, no smoking allowed. So, thank you for that comment.
Commissioner Stonhouse?
Could I broach that to our attorney? That strikes me, I think, as it did Commissioner De Petro, that I thought it really was an absolute law that smoking was not allowed in government buildings. Is there anything you're aware that would circumnavigate that?
I'm not sure. This is the first time I've heard of it. I assume that, are you talking about them being allowed to smoke in their own? I assume that, are you talking about them being allowed to smoke in their own unit, but not in, outside their apartment? Is that right?
I think they were, yeah, I think they were, it was before.
It's a government building.
Right.
It's a public housing, it's a HUD purchase. It's not a government building.
I would think it would make sense to allow them to smoke in their own, the confines of their own apartment.
I'm not arguing what makes sense, because we're talking about the federal government, but I guess I have trouble getting my hands around a HUD building not being a government building.
Well, it's HUD-funded, whether it's a HUD building or not, I don't know. Guess Dottie would have to answer that.
Commissioner?
It's a HUD-funded.
We follow the regulations of HUD and the guidelines of HUD. HUD has never made any determination on whether or not smoking could be in a HUD-funded building. So, we have, the Marquette Housing Commission has decided to make the building, piney building, not a HUD building. Every other HUD building that I have ever worked in with a substantial number, there's always been smoking in the building. So HUD does not have any governance over whether or not there's smoking within an apartment. Within the building, yes, within their apartment building.
All right. Commissioner Ryan?
I think the smoking rules are federal, not state, but that's not my question. The voucher program, you mentioned you have a considerable waiting list. What limits the number of vouchers you can provide? I assume the HUD funding, or?
Maybe turn that over to Heidi, she is our expert.
Heidi, if you could actually come speak into the microphone, so people can hear you at home.
HUD gives us funding for 50 vouchers in Marquette County.
So, could you get more, or what limits that? How is that decision made, do you know?
Actually, the funding is limited. So we get about $15,000 a month. And if we have 44 vouchers that reach $15,000, then we kind of stop there.
Thank you.
Some families could be getting assistance as 600, and some could be getting 100.
I assume there must be limitations on how much rent you're going to pay, too? I mean, so somebody could go out and rent a $10,000 a month apartment?
Oh, yeah, payment standards.
Okay.
Like, a one-bedroom's 500, two-bedroom's 650, things like that.
Okay, thank you. Great. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Dottie. Jim from the Children's Museum is here with our next explainer of the quarter, Ian Nye. Welcome back, Mr. Jim. Hi, Ian, how are you doing? Good? A little nervous? Just a little bit? Okay. Well, welcome here tonight. I'm here to present you with a certificate of appreciation to Ian Nye, outstanding UP Children's Museum explainer of the quarter. So congratulations and good job. Do you have anything to say? No? Okay. I have a feeling Mr. Jim's going to say a few things about you, so.
Ian's not only just a great explainer, oh, and by the way, thank you for wishing his happy birthday. It's the museum's 15th birthday this week. And Ian's a great explainer, but I saw him at Cub Scouts a week ago, where he designed this wonderful Pinewood Derby car, and I thought, well, designer, too. And so last Saturday, we were closing up a birthday party, and he starts to describe the book he's writing about anti-bullying, which will be on sale, I think, in a few months' time in our store, because he'll then join our entrepreneurial youth program as well, the Kid Business Program. So I think he's a triple threat.
All right, well, congratulations again, and happy birthday to the museum.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Okay, Mr. O'Neill, would you like to meet me at the lectern, please? Mr. Bob O'Neill is here to receive a couple things from us. First up is a certificate of appreciation. Bob has served on the Planning Commission for many years and has retired from that board.
Thanks to term limits.
Thanks to term limits, so. We've got a certificate of appreciation here for you, Bob, for volunteer effort on the Planning Commission. Thank you for your hard work and dedication in serving the citizens of this community. So, thank you. You've got that, and you also get a T-shirt and a City of Marquette pin. So, thank you much.
Mr. Mayor?
And we have a new member here.
Mr. Mayor?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Your Honor, I know we have a full agenda this evening, but we did actually miss a few. So, don't know if you want to step back a little bit, or?
We do. Good call. We'll get Emily back up here in a minute, so. Yeah, I'm on a roll, we'll keep going. Emily, why don't you come on up, then I don't have to sit back down again. So, sorry about that to Carl and the proclamation we have coming, but Emily Lanto is here. She is the newest member on the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee. So Emily, welcome.
Thank you.
To the team. We've got a City of Marquette pin for you.
Thank you.
You don't get the T-shirt till you fill out the terms, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I just like the view from up there better. Okay, next up, we have a presentation by the Superior Watershed Partnership, Executive Director Carl Lundquist. Welcome, Carl.
I'm mainly going to kind of recap the last year or so. As you know, we've had a great working relationship with the city for over a decade. But over the last two years, it has definitely increased, a lot more collaborative projects. And over the last year, that has really been evident. And so first, I'd like to start by talking about four separate grants that we worked with the city to receive, totaling over $478,000. Of that, the Superior Watershed Partnership gets a portion. A lot of it goes out to contractors, everything from engineers, and I'll get into that, to energy contractors and so forth. But 190, over 194,000 goes directly to the city. And the first one I would like to talk about is the Better Buildings for Michigan. That's the energy conservation program that I hope everybody's heard about. We've been doing a lot of publication with that program. We've been working with city staff, Eric Steeman, and other staff on that project. So, that total grant is about $300,000. And we started with South Marquette, and we're now moving to the rest of the city. We've completed over 200 home energy assessments. And by the time we're done, we are targeting over 800 homes within the city. After the energy assessment, homeowners qualify for low-income loans, no-income loans, cost sharing, and that is valued at an additional $700,000, but we're not counting that as part of the grant, because that comes directly from the state. So far, we've had, you know, of those 200 homes that have been completed, everything from windows to insulation to cost sharing for furnaces, and we had our first solar unit go in recently, and hopefully you saw that media on that. So that's, the other thing about that program is there are 15 communities around the state that have received these grants. It was a competitive process. We are leading the state. Marquette is leading the state. Out of all those 15 communities, we have more signups, which is the goal, to get people to participate and reduce their energy consumption and their energy bills. So, we're leading the state, and that is good news for Marquette, because it can mean additional funding for this program. Another grant I wanted to talk about is working with Kurt Goodman and the Wastewater Treatment Plant. We received a grant through the EPA Great Lakes Restoration Initiative to expand beach monitoring for the city and stormwater monitoring related to water quality. Another recent grant that was just announced, again, working with Dennis and Bill, is through the DEQ Coastal Management Program, and that was a grant to help fund the Lake Shore Boulevard relocation project. So it's a planning grant, and a large portion of that will be available to the city to contract the engineering for this relocation of Lake Shore Boulevard and the restoration of that section to a more natural beach condition. That's currently where there's the huge pile of rock and rubble. That will be a multi-year process. Another grant that I wanted to inform you about is also through the Michigan Coastal Management Program. And we do some things UP-wide, and this is a UP-wide grant to educate communities about community wind power, the potential for, you know, Upper Peninsula communities to consider this. But through that grant, we were able, there was an opportunity where we were able to take $10,000 out of that grant and work with Michigan State University. They had a statewide program to take existing state police towers, such as the one just south of town by the prison. And we were able to use that funding to put instruments on that tower at different levels and for monitoring wind data. And the first step in any wind power project is having one year's worth of data, so you know you have enough wind for a viable wind power project, should the community ever consider that. And the good news is, it has been a year now, and you have adequate wind. And it's probably not surprising to most people. But before the, most communities are going to invest, or others are going to invest, it's the first step in that process. Okay, so those are the grant highlights I wanted to mention. Again, totaling $478,000 with 194,000 going to the city. The other are things, we received 20,000 in, you know, support from the community, I mean, from the city, for our community projects. And I wanted to just quickly highlight how that funding is used, and some of the things we do that are not directly funded through a grant, or we're using some of that funding or our own general funds. And one, this last fall, working with Scott Kimbenzie and the Public Works Department, we hosted the electronic waste collection. We had cars lined up down Baraga Avenue. It was on the front page of the Mining Journal. We collected over 30 tons of electronic waste that day. Another program that's ongoing is the Dune Restoration Projects we have with the city. Again, we use that funding to help do that, and that'll be ongoing this year. An upcoming project, working with Mike Angeli and the Police Department, is to help promote the medication, the pharmaceutical takeback that will happen on April 28th. And an ongoing program we've had for many years is our Earth Keeper Church Program. So we're working with the, over 15 congregations in the City of Marquette this year on a program that promotes water conservation at the household level. And then other programs, I don't want to mention everything we do, because I don't have time, but things like beach cleanups, our volunteer programs, things we do with schools, we serve on the Marquette Sustainability Committee, the program we did with the Community Foundation to raise awareness about cigarette butts and how they go through the storm drain and end up on the beach, the Red Bucket Program, and other community education programs. So that's, gives you an idea of how that support is used and how important it is. The other thing I wanted to mention before I forget this department is Keith Whittington and the Engineering Department. We've worked closely with them for over the last year on assisting in developing the wetland mitigation and restoration plan for the McClellan Extension and for enhancing the wetland out at Prescott Park. And close to last, I wanted to mention that the Superior Watershed Partnership will be the official host of the 2013 Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Cities Conference here in Marquette, and we'll work closely with the City of Marquette on that conference. That includes over 80 cities from around the Great Lakes, US and Canadian cities, large cities such as Chicago, Montreal, Milwaukee, and Toronto, but a lot of smaller cities also. And it's really, usually they're held in larger cities. And so it's an honor for Marquette to win that, and that is June of 2013, and you'll be hearing more about that. I guess I don't need to say some of the economic benefits of these grants. That energy program alone results in energy assessments, furnace installers, window installers, insulators, on and on. And a lot of our projects are like that. So those grant funds really have a broader impact on the community. And that's really all I had. Thank you.
All right, we have a question for you.
Thank you. Carl, in the South Marquette project, could you, I got two questions. How many applicants did you receive, and how many were approved?
That is a great question. And Natasha Cosse from our office is coordinating that program, and I could have her get that information to you tomorrow. But my understanding is pretty much anybody who applies gets the assessment. Then, if they, then the assessment tells them what they need in their house, then they have to decide whether they are going to come up with the cost sharing. Sometimes, some things require a 50% cost share, or some things you can get a loan for, and it varies for each thing. So I think, pretty much, the majority of people that sign up get something done, but she would have those numbers.
Could you forward that information to the City Manager's Office, please? Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Schneider?
Carl, I definitely appreciate you coming up and speaking to us and kind of letting us know what you've done over the last year, and I really, really do appreciate what the partnership you and your staff has done with the city. Could you explain a little bit on the Better Buildings and how it's going to be expanding into north and the rest of Marquette, kind of what timeframe and how people can get a hold of you to engage in that?
Sure. So, over the last year, we started in South Marquette, everything south of 41, and that is just wrapping up now. And this month, and so, April is kind of a transition month, but people can start signing up pretty much, not pretty much, anywhere in the rest of the city, so north of 41. It will be going kind of on a neighborhood-by-neighborhood approach, but they can sign up anytime, and starting in May, for sure, the new assessments will be happening and the cost sharing will start. So April's kind of a transition month. You can call our office at 228-6095, or go to our website for more information, and that's superiorwatersheds.org.
All right.
Sorry. Carl, do you take walk-ins where people can go to your office out at the island?
Yes, we're out at Prescott Park in the old Caretaker's Building, and it's open to the public. So, yes, if you need more information, that's another option if you're out at the park. And again, Natasha Cosse is coordinating that program, and when you call, it'll take you directly to the energy sign-up. That's the first choice, because we do get a lot of calls for that.
Okay, thank you for educating us on that. Very good. Very good.
All right, thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have a proclamation. Sexual Assault Awareness Month. City Clerk?
Thank you, Your Honor. Whereas sexual assault affects women, children, and men of all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds, and whereas in addition to the immediate physical and emotional costs, sexual assault may also have associated consequences of post-traumatic stress disorder, substance abuse, depression, homelessness, eating disorders, and suicide. And whereas sexual assault can be devastating, not only for the survivors, but also for the family and friends of the survivors. And whereas no one, person, organization, agency, or community can eliminate sexual assault on their own, but we can work together to educate our entire population about what can be done to prevent the sexual assault, support, excuse me, prevent sexual assault, support victims and survivors and their significant others, and increase support for agencies providing services to victims and survivors. And whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing sexual violence, now therefore, I, John P. Keevill, Mayor of the city of Marquette, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2012 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the city of Marquette dated this 26th day of March 2012.
All right, thank you. All right, next up, we've got a couple appointments. I'll read both of them, and we can take them together, one at a time. David Carlson, Peter White Public Library Board of Trustees for a term 5212 through 5117. And Colin Sesterino, I hope I got that right, Arts and Culture Advisory Committee for a term ending 6/112. Commissioners? Commissioner Ryan?
I would move we appoint David Carlson to the Peter White Public Library Board of Trustees for a term ending 5117, beginning 5212. And Colin Sesterino to the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee for a term ending June 1st, 2012.
We have a motion. Do we have support? Commissioner Schneider?
Support.
Any comments?
Additional comments?
Seeing none, all in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. And we've got one reappointment. Robert Chapman, Prescott Park Advisory Committee for a term ending 4115. Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we appoint, reappoint Robert Chapman to the Prescott Park Advisory Committee for a term ending April 1st, 2015.
All right, do we have support? Commissioner DePietro? Any comments? Commissioner Neme?
Just to thank Mr. Chapman for being willing to serve a second term.
Thank you. Commissioner DePietro?
I concur, thank you.
Any additional comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is public comment. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Citizens may reserve time to speak on agenda items. This may result in the item being moved up on the agenda at the mayor's discretion. Anyone wish to address the commission? And if you could, give your name and physical address.
Maggie Morgan, 60 North Basin Drive, Nagani. I'd like to speak to the commission about the Hiawatha Music Co-op tourist park contract, please.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Frank Jeff Verito, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. With bars and restaurants now smoke-free, smokers are taking to the sidewalks to pacify the addiction. The law stipulates 20 feet from the door, which few users adhere to. And which door? On urban sidewalks, there's a door within almost any 20 feet, leaving nowhere for the rest of us to walk except through toxic plumes. I've yet to meet a smoker who cares which way the wind is blowing or whether smoke wafts once it leaves their mouths. So long as they're committing suicide, what do they care about the rest of us? Most proceed to litter their butts and packages upon the earth, not considering them litter any more than they consider nicotine a hardcore drug. My best friend began smoking on his 16th birthday. He lasted until age 55, when the cancer spread from his throat to his lymph nodes to his liver. He easily quit alcohol and the weed decades earlier, but he couldn't lick cigarettes. Not even his devotion to God saved him, not in this world, anyway. If these addicts are determined to commit suicide, let them do so in their own space, not in the air they share with us. We cannot walk anywhere in town without breathing this filth, and as people get older, we're more sensitive to carcinogens in the air. Please take action to rid our sidewalks of that acrid smoke. Another irritant is the increase of graffiti. The recent defacement of Prescott Park was efficiently taken care of, raising the question as to why not across town? Letting graffiti linger encourages more graffiti. The best way to curtail graffiti epidemic is to cover it up the next day. Vandals will then feel that the short life of their messages aren't worth the risk of being caught. March 12th, you properly handled the McCarty's restroom item to apply for the grant by April 2nd. Concern only rose after one member asked where the building would be sited and whether the location I proposed was feasible. Mr. Zuger answered that the most suitable location depends upon existing infrastructure. He's correct to have staff look at all options, however, citing a facility solely upon existing infrastructure is ludicrous, except when the present location is already the most suitable or when there's an impenetrable obstacle. Otherwise, it makes more sense to cite a facility to maximize efficiency and comfort to the most users while imposing the less damage to the resource. Today, Mr. Vida suggested restrooms at the northeast corner of Lake Shore Boulevard and Michigan Street, 50 feet west of the location that I depicted on March 12th. I too had considered Bill's spot, except that you might be reluctant to block the new McCarty's sign, and beachgoers would need to walk farther. Of course, there's more likely infrastructure at an intersection and less intrusion there upon the resource, so please go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Verito. Anyone else wishing to address the commission? Anyone else? All right, we will close public comment and move to the consent agenda. City Clerk, do you want to read all the items?
Yes, Your Honor. Item A, approve the minutes of the March 12, 2012 commission meeting. Item B, approve the total bills payable in the amount of $458,419.75. Item C, authorize the city clerk, or, excuse me, authorize the city to seek Sioux-Saint-Murray Tribe of Chippewa Indians funding of $10,000 toward the purchase of a specially-equipped vehicle for police department, for the police department's K-9 unit, and authorize the clerk to sign the request form. Item D, authorize the city to act as fiscal intermediary for Sioux-Saint-Murray Tribe of Chippewa Indians funding of $90,000 for a floating barge for the Marquette 4th of July fireworks display, and authorize the clerk to sign the request form. Item E, authorize the city to act as fiscal intermediary for KBIC funding of 95, or $9,500 for Marquette junior hockey equipment purchases. Item F, authorize the city to act as fiscal intermediary for KBIC funding of $2,655.94 for the MSU College of Human Medicine Upper Peninsula Region for equipment purchases. Item G, authorize the city to act as fiscal intermediary, intermediary for KBIC funding of $15,000 for general operations at the Beacon House. Item H, authorize the city to act as fiscal intermediary for KBIC funding of $78,778 for the Superior Watershed Partnerships KBIC Youth Conservation Corps and their college and conservation career preparation program. Item I, authorize the city to act as fiscal intermediary for KBIC funding of $5,000 for an upcoming exhibit at the Marquette Regional History Center. And item J, amend the previously adopted motion approving the United Way lease by changing the effective date of the lease to March 1, 2012, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the lease.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Ryan?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Schneider?
Support.
Commissioner Ryan?
These are typically routine items, and these meet that list, meet that criteria. I think it might be worth pointing out that it's a long list tonight, but the instances where the city is acting as a financial intermediary, intermediary, these are generally instances where various organizations have pursued funding from the Sioux Tribe of Chippewa Indians and the KBIC, and this is a worthwhile role for the city to play in, in helping these organizations to get that support, but it does not come with any cost to the city.
Thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
No further comment.
Any additional questions, comments? All in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. New business, number eight, report and recommendation from the city manager regarding digital ortho photos for GIS. City Clerk?
Thank you, Your Honor. Background, the city of Marquette maintains a geographic information system which is based on aerial photography. These photos are geo-referenced and used for infrastructure mapping, property management, tax assessment, planning, and economic development, and emergency response planning. Based data requires periodic updates to reflect changes in the as-built environment. The best time to capture this data is in the spring during the narrow window between the time snow cover has gone and before trees leaf out. Competition was conducted and bids were received from three vendors with Ayers Associates being the low bidder meeting specifications. The city attorney has reviewed and approved the proposed contract. Fiscal effect, $22,000 was appropriated in the 2011-12 budget for the photos recommendation. Approve the contract with Ayers Associates of Madison, Wisconsin for aerial photography and production of color digital ortho photos in the amount of $22,000, and authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the contract, alternatives as determined by the commission.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I move to approve the contract with Ayers Associates of Madison, Wisconsin for aerial photography and production of color digital ortho photos in the amount of $22,000, and authorize the mayor and the city clerk to execute the contract.
Thank you. Commissioner DePietro supports. Commissioner Stonehouse, any comments?
My only comment would be of city staff, as this is commonly used for the GIS system, as any effort been made to coordinate having these, this particular group availability with surrounding townships in terms of multi-using their, their effort.
Mr. Stekowitz?
We, thank you, Mayor, Commissioner. As part of what we have proposed to you during the last budget, we had offered this service to surrounding townships, and they all declined. Thank you.
Thank you. Regardless of their participation or not, I think this is a good opportunity and something we need to move forward to maintain our, the veracity of our GIS planning. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner DePietro, any comments?
Nothing further, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up, number nine, report and recommendation from the city manager regarding Hiawatha Music Nonprofit Corporation. City Clerk?
Thank you, Your Honor. Background, the Hiawatha Music Nonprofit Corporation has leased the tourist park campground for over a decade for their Hiawatha Traditional Music Festival. The most recent contract was a three-year agreement that expired in 2011. Staff has been working with Hiawatha during the winter to renew their contract. Staff is requesting the commission consider a five-year agreement that will expand, will be expanded to include the Thursday prior to each year's festival. Reimbursement for the use of the park will include payment for all of the campground sites, to include 12 primitive, 60 electric, and 38 full-service sites. The three picnic sites will also be reserved for the event. Total revenues to the city for the 2011 event were $13,821, or 9% of the annual campground revenues. The agreement is attached for further detailed review. Fiscal effect, the tourist park fund will anticipate approximately $13,800 of annual revenue for the term of the contract. Recommendation, approve the special event permit for the Hiawatha Traditional Music Festival with the terms and conditions provided. Alternatives, do not enter into a contract with Hiawatha Music Nonprofit Corporation.
All right, thank you. Ms. Morgan, you would ask to speak on this agenda item?
First, I'd like to take a minute to thank the city staff that has worked so hard to help put this together for us. Carl Zuger, Cindy Noble, Ron Keefe, and, and other members of their staffs. Also, special thanks to Carl for getting the letters of support in your packets. I hope you had an opportunity to read those. I think most of the letters, actually, all of the letters do a good job of reflecting what our festival means, both to the, the citizens of Marquette and to the community, and also for the many people who visit our community because of the Hiawatha Festival. We've been at the tourist park since 1984, which is the vast majority of the 34 years of our event. We like to think we've been a good and responsible tenant of the tourist park. We always say that nobody loves the tourist park like Hiawatha people, and, and I think that's really true. Part of our impact on the community is that of our advanced ticket sales, more than 60% of them come from outside of the Marquette County area. We did a survey of our festival goers in 2011, and it showed evidence of more than 20, people coming from more than 27 states and several foreign countries, not counting Canada. One of the letters of support we got that was actually too late to make it into your packet was a guy who tries to come from China every year. He's been coming with his family for years and works for the diplomatic service now and always takes his vacations so he can come back for Hiawatha. In some of the letters, there were stories of people whose kids came to college here after their years of coming to the Hiawatha Festival. So we believe that our impact on the community extends well beyond just the three and now hopefully four days of our festival. For the last several years, we've been paying full price for the park. In the early days of the festival, we got a little bit of a break, but for the last several years, we've paid full price for the park. We now pay all our public service costs, all our police costs. And if we take over the operation of the Thursday night campsite drawing, there will be very, very little impact on the city staff and very little cost to the city for having our event. And there will be a lot of benefits. Of our festival budget, which is between $170,000, $180,000, excluding our performer contracts, we spend approximately 60% of our festival budget within the Marquette area. Again, we, we represent a minimal cost to the city, and we like to think a, a great benefit, and we love the tourist park, we hope we can stay there. The five-year contract would allow us to go through this negotiation process a little less frequently and kind of make it a bit easier on the city staff. So we hope you'll approve a five-year contract and allow us to take over Thursday night and the campsite lottery, and allow us to continue holding our event at the tourist park. Any questions?
I don't see any. What is the date again, if you want to announce just?
This year, it's July 20 through 22nd.
Okay.
Always the next-to-last full weekend in July.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Schneider?
Yes, I would like to move that we approve the special event permit for the Hiawatha Traditional Music Festival with terms and conditions provided.
Do we have support? Commissioner DePietro supports. Commissioner Schneider, any comments?
Just one, I've, you know, I moved here in 96, and Hiawatha's been on and off a part of my life the entire time being here. I think it's, it's very significant to a number of the members of our community and to our community at large that extends sometimes even overseas. So I really appreciate the work that all of the volunteers and, and staff has put into all the years of Hiawatha, and I'm happy to have you guys here.
Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to ask Carl Zuger a question for a second. Around this date, does it look like the tourist park will have water up to its proper level by then?
Because really, that's up to the, the BLP and how quickly their contractors finish the, the project. It's our understanding that the, the lake will be back to its levels this summer. I'm not certain if it will be by this date, which is July 19th through the July 23rd.
Okay, because I knew it was going to be in that, uh, time area, so I was kind of hoped that it would be, but thank you anyways. Thank you, Your Honor.
Commissioner Ryan?
I'm totally in support of, of the Hiawatha Music Festival and want us to move forward, but I do have some questions about what it is we're approving tonight. We're approving a permit? That's what the recommendation says, and that has nothing to do with, with whatever these costs are? Because the, it's not clear what, what the costs are and the material we've received.
There, it should be in the contract. The permit is essentially-
There, it should be in the contract. The permit is essentially a contract with Hiawatha and has the costs in it.
Well, really, mine came with a lot of blank numbers.
So did mine. I asked about that, but the original document is with the city clerk, apparently.
And so, we don't know what it is we're approving. I mean, there's a, there's a, it says the tourist park fund will anticipate approximately thirteen thousand eight hundred dollars of annual revenue, but it doesn't... Are they basically leasing the sites as, as outlined?
Yes, if I can answer that question.
Okay.
Um, if you look in the contract, um, in, the contract is, the title of the contract is special events permit for city parks, streets, buildings, and grounds. And so, what you're, what you're approving tonight is the, you know, is the, the document that's attached to the agenda supplement. Um, the, the date says, um, as I think Maggie's indicated is, uh, this year it's the nineteenth through the twenty-third. Uh, twenty thirteen, it'll be July eighteenth through the twenty-second. Um, July fourth, or two thousand fourteen, it'll be July seventeenth through the, the twenty-first. Um, two thousand fifteen, sixteenth, July sixteenth through the twentieth, and, uh, July, or I mean, in twenty sixteen, July fourteenth through the twenty-eighth. On, in terms of the, the contract, um, the, the, what it's, what it specifies under section five is under the fees.
Right.
It's got eleven tent sites at the cost, or the, uh, the cost that's in the fee structure. So, in, in our case, we've got a fee of eighteen dollars per site for primitive. There's sixty-one electric sites at twenty-seven dollars, and that's in your fee structure that the commission approves every year, and then thirty-eight full-service sites at thirty-two dollars per site. Um, also, the picnic areas, um, that you see there is a hundred dollars per site, and that's also in your fee structure. Um, so that's included. The only thing that's not included is, uh, one day, uh, which would be the Thursday for, uh, one of the picnic sites. That's why it's eleven hundred dollars versus the twelve hundred for the full. That's, that's explained in the notes, um, beneath that. Um, total fees is thirteen thousand three forty-four, three hundred and forty-four, and that does not include in the trash liners, um, for the trash receptacles.
Well, it says the total revenue to the city for two thousand eleven was thirteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-one dollars.
Right, and that includes, uh, labor costs.
And this will be?
And that's not included in, in this contract, because we don't know what those labor costs will be. That'll be determined on any given year.
So, the fact that we're, we're having an additional night, this is generating some additional revenue as well for the city?
Correct. It's one night where the, uh, the campground will be completely, um, uh, leased out or, or used by Hiawatha.
Well, as I say, I, I think it was important to kind of understand what it is we're approving here, but, but I do strongly support the event, and I, I know it has a tremendous positive benefit for our community, so no question about that.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? I will echo those same sentiments. This is truly one of the hallmark events in our community, and, and this group for years has done just a, a class job of pulling it off, so I, I'm, I'm glad to see a five-year, uh, contract, so. With that, I'll call the question. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Next up, number ten, report and recommendation from the city manager regarding waterways grant submission. City clerk?
Thank you, your honor. Background, in October of two thousand eleven, staff worked with the Michigan DNR Waterways Grant Program to submit a preliminary grant application for Phase Two boat launch reconstruction. The Waterways Grant Program is a funding source that is best suited for this project. The city submitted the Waterways Grant Application in October anticipating commission approval. If successful, the grant will fund up to fifty percent of the project cost of two hundred one thousand dollars and a fifty percent local match. The application process does require a resolution of support which is attached. If funded, the project would be considered in the FY twelve thirteen budget process. Excuse me. Fiscal effect, the Waterways Grant would require a fifty percent match from the Marina Fund. Any dollars not met by the Marina Fund would require general fund commitment. Recommendation, authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the resolution and submit a Waterways Grant Program Fund application for the Prescott Marina Phase Two Boat Launch Reconstruction. Alternatives as determined, or excuse me, alternatives do not submit the grant application.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Anyone? Commissioner Stonehouse?
A question, if I can, from Mr. Mr. Ziegler. Um, can this particular grant money be repurposed for anything else, or are we locked into strictly using it for the, um, for the boat launch reconstruction?
These dollars would be locked into the boat launch reconstruction.
But the previous money we have from dredging does have an opportunity for repurposing?
Correct. There are different appropriations. Um, the boat launch is line item appropriations, um, dollars from my understanding, and the, um, dredging is lump sum, which allows for some flexibility. Thank you.
We have a motion either way. Commissioner Ryan?
I'll make a motion that we authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the resolution and submit a Waterways Grant Program Fund Application for the Prescott Marina Phase Two Boat Launch Reconstruction.
Right, do we have support? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I will, uh, support that.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan, any comments?
You know, I'm not going to miss an opportunity to keep giving the same speech over and over. I do support this project, because I think no matter what we do, we need a boat launch at Prescott. But I continue to believe that this should be part of a broader study as to what we're going to do with our harbors in Marquette. Now, I mentioned this before, and someone said, "Well, we don't know what's going to happen with Founders Landing." Well, we should know. That's the whole point. We should be looking at what we're going to do with marinas in the city of Marquette. What role does, do the current marinas play? What role does the old ordoc play? I've heard some interesting ideas about how that might be used. You know, we're creating some new seawalls in some new places. How are we going to use these pilings that we have to use or be penalized for? So, you know, for us to be attacking this piecemeal, I, I continue to disagree with that. I, I think we should have a plan for Marquette Harbor, the upper and lower harbor, to, to serve both our community and, uh, and the boating public. But I do think that, uh, a boat launch is needed at Prescott, so I will support this.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Nimi?
Thank you, your honor. I concur generally with, uh, the comments of Commissioner Ryan, but I do have a couple of questions on this. The Harbor Advisory Committee is now looking at the, the ordering of the, the phases, and that recommendation hasn't been quite determined yet to, to come to us. I guess one question I have is, can the money for dredging, if it, if it can't be done first, can that be put off till, till the appropriate time? And, and, uh, if we get funding for the boat launch, could that be maybe perhaps one of the first projects within their plan, if, if that's what they desire or recommend?
Uh, there's three years, um, that any municipality has when they've been given a, a grant award like this. Um, these dollars would have to be, the dredging dollars would have to be used by the fall of twenty thirteen. Um, and I believe that, well, I know the Harbor Advisory Committee has gone through their deliberations. They will have a recommendation to the commission. They're hoping the first meeting in April, um, with, uh, their considerations for, and recommendations for the phasing of the Prescott project.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Um, I, I certainly do agree with, with much of what Commissioner Ryan talked about when he said we really do need to have a plan that has a wider view, I think, of what the city's harbor should be, how they should look, and then how we should operate them. Uh, and, and like him, I, I concur too, that it's, it's very important that at Prescott, we do have the, the launch ramp operational and working. That's the number-one use of the harbor right now. There's more boats coming and going from there than ever before by launching. And I think whatever we do there, uh, certainly, we should provide that activity. So, the ability to get the grant money from the state for the launching and whatever we choose to do with the, the dredging money, I, I think both of those issues go nicely together. When the Harbor Committee comes up with their recommendation that would carry it any further than that, I, I think that's something we look at differently. Uh, but these two items, I think, are, are ones that it makes a great deal of sense for us to go forward with. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Number eleven, report and recommendation from the city manager regarding drug enforcement canine sharing agreement. City clerk?
Yes, your honor. Background, for several years, the city and county have had a sharing arrangement for services provided by near, the city's canine used for search and rescue operations, upset investigations, and explosives investigations. Marquette County has offered to provide the city with five thousand dollars toward the purchase of two young drug enforcement canines. These canines would be owned by the city and shared with the county for the purposes noted above. The city attorney has prepared the attached agreement. Fiscal effect, the city would realize five thousand dollars from the county to be used toward the purchase of two drug enforcement canines. Recommendation, approve the drug enforcement canine sharing agreement and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
All right, thank you. Commissioners? Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you, your honor. I, uh, move that we approve the recommendation of the drug enforcement canine sharing agreement and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement. Thank you.
Commissioner Ryan?
I'll support the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner DePietro, any additional comments?
Uh, I believe this is an excellent program. Our present canine is going to be retiring this, this year, and also, I can't thank the private sector enough for everybody stepping up to support this program in Marquette County and all the businesses, so I think this is a very worthwhile, uh, program. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next up, number twelve, chickens and agriculture. Commissioner Schneider?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, to start the discussion, I would like to actually ask, uh, Mr. Stackwitz, if you could explain to the commission and the citizens what our current rules are on chickens and agriculture within city limits?
I'd be happy to answer that from a zoning perspective, in that chickens are actually regulated under a separate ordinance, different from zoning in the city of Marquette here. Uh, Ron, you want to help me out with this one? I believe it's the nuisance ordinance, and, um, I believe that in the Marquette City Code, it says that, uh, no animals are permitted other than domesticated animals. So, that's in a general sense of what I understand regarding the city code. With regards to zoning, um, like I said, agriculture is permitted in the zoning ordinance in a deferred development district, and that would be a larger type of agriculture. There is nothing in the zoning ordinance, of course, that permits someone from having a, a garden, a, a hoop house, as long as they meet the, uh, standards of the ordinance for an accessory structure with appropriate rear yard setbacks and, and things like that. Um, but with regards to the actual keeping of animals or animal husbandry, that is covered in a separate section of the code. Is that adequate?
Yeah. If you want me to weigh in on that, it's in the animal ordinance, um, specifically, uh, section eight point five, keeping of animals. It shall be unlawful for any person to keep animals within the city except for domestic pets, and domestic pets in the ordinance are, um, defined as dogs, cats, or animals customarily kept or housed inside dwellings as household pets. Um, typically, just to pick up where Dennis left off, typically, the question about chickens has to do with whether or not, uh, the Right to Farm Act in Michigan preempts our local zoning ordinances, and it's pretty clear that it doesn't in most situations. If we have an area that is zoned agricultural, uh, then our ordinance would be preempted as long as the specific, uh, farming met certain criteria as defined under the act. But, uh, you know, that's the first thing. The Right to Farm Act does not give individuals permission to violate our zoning ordinances, and I, I think that's, you know, where the start, that's where it starts. Um, and I don't know what agricultural zones we have in, in, uh, in the city.
It's deferred development is where agricultural uses are allowed, and there are very few properties that are, are zoned that, um, I could probably talk about this for twenty minutes, so I'm going to hold off on doing that. I'll, I'll just answer questions at the pleasure of the commission.
All right. Thank you. That, that gives me a good base. So, in the last week, I was contacted by somebody who actually did receive a citation, um, regarding chickens, and in speaking with, about that with some other citizens, I found somebody else who actually, um, was asked to cut down their, their crop of corn that they were growing in their front yard, and it just kind of made me realize that since I've been on for the last year and a half, um, the biggest questions that I get are around urban agriculture, generally about chickens. Um, and so, I figured that it was my role to actually sit up here and, and talk to some of the commissioners about kind of what our feelings are about raising chickens and having other, other urban agriculture things going on within our community. Um, we're seeing something like the Michigan Right to Farm Act, um, which, from my, my understanding, has played out in court, that it is trying to challenge some municipalities on, on what the zoning abilities are of, of local municipalities, but then there's also the cottage food bill which, um, allows small-time producers to move around the licensed kitchen from the health department so that they can produce food for, for small resale. Um, we've got a food cooperative that's expanding dramatically and starting to look to get into food distribution and production. Uh, we've got a lot of people that are interested in local food. I went to a chicken meeting, uh, that the food co-op had sponsored, and there was over a hundred and twenty people, half of them were city residents, asking about, um, how to take care of chickens. Um, I also have a number of friends who have chickens in town. So, there's, there's a lot of interest, um, and I guess I'm just kind of curious what the rest of the commissioners feel about agriculture and small animal husbandry operations within the city limits.
I'd be happy to answer that. You want to be a farmer, you move out of the city. I mean, we have an ordinance. We have it, it laid out very clearly. It should be not, no one should have any doubt about it. We just have a, a lawyer weigh in on it, in fact, that it is inappropriate to maintain chickens or animals, farm animals within the city. It is inapplicable to turn your front lawn into a, um, a cornfield. That's why we have cities, and that's why we have townships, and that's why we have other areas, and that's where those activities rightly belong.
I'll take the middle of the road, see, I'm squarely in between you two. I, I think some of it bears merit. I, I think there's a trend, not just in this community, but across the country, to grow more of your own food, um, and I think it's something worth looking at. Am I a proponent of chicken coops in people's yards? I don't know. I don't know how I'd feel about that, but I think it, it at least, uh, has enough merit that maybe we should discuss it and see what other communities are doing.
Well, not running for office. Let me weigh in from this side. That, clearly, if you want to maintain a garden or, and, and grow food within those confines, you have the ability to do so, and the zoning officer just described how you can do that and do it effectively. But raising animals is a whole different, I mean, that's, that's why we have farms, and that's where they rightly belong. We're, we're not the Marquette of a hundred years ago, where that's what we're doing. We have a wonderful co-op in town that maintains the freshest food and vegetables you can find anywhere. There simply is not an overwhelming need for us to have to do that. If somebody feels very strongly that this is the life that they want to leave or live, then they really just don't belong in a city, and I think that's clearly the way our ordinances, our ordinances are set up, and I think clearly that's the answer we should follow, but I will obviously be happy to listen to other viewpoints.
Sounds like it. Commissioner Ryan?
Well, you know, I, I think the, the rules and other ordinances we have are here to, to really protect the, the community and the citizens at large. You know, I'll, I'll tell you, I, I walk a lot in this community, and I get pretty unhappy when I see dog crap on the sidewalk. Now, you know, um, if we didn't, if we didn't have some rules and regulations, we'd have dogs running all over, you know, and I think that's wrong, and I think it's unfortunate that people who have dogs don't do what they're supposed to do and follow the rules. Many of them do. Many of them do. I grant you that. But my point is, you know, now it's chickens and roosters crowing in the morning, and, you know, uh, what, what's, where do we draw the line, where it starts to affect other people? I think that's the issue. If you could somehow put a wall around your house and, and, uh, keep the noise and, and the other stuff in, that would be fine, but if you're going to affect the neighbors, the neighborhood, you know, that, that's where I think it becomes an issue for the community. It all, it all sounds very nice, It all sounds very nice, but, you know, what if your neighbor doesn't want to have chickens in his neighbor's backyard? I think that's, you know, that's where I come from, so.
Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you, Your Honor. I remember growing up on Prescott Isle, and everybody in the North Marquette area had chickens running around, just like you did dogs, you know, running freely, but not all over the streets and not hip-hopping all over everybody's yard. They kind of stayed in the yards that they were being raised in. And as the grocery stores start selling more chickens, they kind of, I think, worked with the city fathers to kind of outlaw chickens so they could sell more eggs. And as stores started, there's more stores coming into the area, more stores were selling eggs, and then finally, the commissioners abolished the chicken ordinance and send them out towards the townships. Now, I've been following the township just west of us, couple miles west of us. They're addressing this, they're addressing this chicken issue. I'm not saying chicken coop, but there's a lot of chickens west of us, about almost 11 miles west of us, there's chickens being raised. We've got chickens in the city of Marquette, north, south, east, west side of town. And if you look at the police blog, once in a while, you'll see where Central Dispatch sends one of our officers over to a neighborhood because the chickens are going in other people's yards. But anyways, this year, people want to raise some of their own chickens to have their own eggs because of some of the things that have been happening last few years as far as people buying eggs only to find out they were spoiled from the multi-million egg production per day. And so some of them want to sit back, smell the flowers, and raise some chickens just for their own purposes and not to sell them to our city fathers and other people. So that's why I'm glad that Commissioner Schneider had brought this issue up, because we've all heard it, and we all know there are chickens in the city of Marquette. So where we go with this, stay tuned. There's more to the story. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think our animal control ordinance certainly serves a good purpose, but I too, I support the dialogue, and perhaps the planning commission can take a look at it. Certainly, neighbors ought to be protected from chicken coops in adjacent their backyard. But on the other hand, I think if people do want to raise chickens, there are a few places in the city that it might be appropriate. In the northwest section, there's some forested areas that people live that perhaps could raise chickens, and there may be ways that you can raise chickens without providing a real problem to your neighbors. Maybe it could be a nonconforming use that the neighbors would have to sign off on, but I think it's something we probably ought to look at. I don't think we should just simply by fiat require that the citizens move out of the city. I think we should accommodate all the citizens of the city, and there ought to be a way to do it.
More comment? Commissioner Schneider?
Sure. I definitely want to thank my fellow commissioners for having the dialogue. I think it's really good for the citizens to be able to, one, understand what our current rules are, as well as what we as a commission generally feel about it and kind of what's going forward from here. I did want to address the nuisance issue. You know, I find it quite odd to hear nuisance related to chickens, because it could be related to car stereos, it could be related to home stereo systems, it could be related to dogs, it could be related to many other things. And so if we want to talk about nuisance, I think there's much broader dialogue to have there. If you have three or four chickens, that's not an issue. The general theme that I hear is, you know, chickens seem fine, it's great to have a little bit of food or something like that, but, you know, we really don't want to cause problems for neighbors and the community around them. So I guess as this goes forward over the next few months, I mean, there's really no action item, but if it does, I guess it's more to recognize that the nuisance issue is something to be addressed in and of itself rather than the chickens, per se.
Just to make the record clear, I do feel the same about barking dogs and loud stereos too, so I'm not just picking on chickens.
I do too. So other than that, I just, I really appreciate the commission stepping forward and kind of discussing the issue with me.
Thank you. Commissioner Stenaj?
Thank you, Your Honor. I felt compelled to weigh in on this. It's mind-boggling to me. I think the history of chicken coops and raising chickens of years past should go the same way of how we vented tar in the Lake Superior. It served its purpose in the past, it doesn't serve its purpose in the current day. Planning and zoning ordinances protect property values, and I think we can all sit up here and say, well, we'd like, you know, if somebody wants to do it, it's okay, but if your neighbor did it, you probably wouldn't be real keen about it. And if your neighbor was growing corn in the front yard, you probably wouldn't be keen about that either. I don't think it has a purpose within the city limits. I think whatever the zoning process is, whatever the rural promulgation process is, it should run its course. And at the end of the day, citizens will decide through that rural promulgation process what the zoning ordinances should be. But personally, I would tend to agree with Commissioner Stonehouse. Thank you.
Commissioner Schneider?
One last little bit. You know, I've got to say, I definitely think our role as a commission is to monitor, watch out for, advocate for the quality of life of our citizens rather than just the property values of our citizens. I think that we've seen our commercial industries move farther and farther towards centralization as Commissioner DePietro had put, the multimillion-dollar egg, or the multimillion egg-producing factories. I think we're something that peaked in the 80s and 90s, and I think we're moving more and more to a decentralized food system. At least a lot of, more people are expressing interest in that. So with that, again, I appreciate the dialogue.
Okay. All right. Next up is a closed session meeting, and typically what we'll do is move public comment up and give people an opportunity to express their comments before we go into closed sessions, so they don't have to wait in the hall for as long as this should take. So we'll open up public comment. Comments should be limited to five minutes per person. And again, if you could state your name and physical address for the record.
My name is Benjamin, and my address is 375 West Crescent, Marquette, Michigan.
Your last name?
Stanley.
Okay, thank you.
I'm so glad that this was brought up today. I had four chickens myself. I started off with quails. My friends had them. The eggs, they really do taste a lot better when you grow them yourself. But my dog ate all the quails, it was sad to say. But I had those chickens for two, two and a half years, and I named them all, and they were my pets, and I, it's kind of cheesy, but I love those chickens. And I had two roosters, one of them crowed a lot, and my roommates forced me to get rid of it, and I didn't have a problem with that. So the noise, roosters, got to go. Then another one turned out to be a rooster, so I got rid of that too. So I love the two hens. And they were great. All my neighbors loved them. They came by and they would come and play with the chickens, and it got a lot of the older and younger kids out of the house, which I thought was great, which I didn't really expect. I expected a lot of trouble, but a lot of my neighbors were like, oh, yeah, it reminds me of growing up on the farm, that was really nice. So it was really cool. And then with the corn, I totally understand. I had a roommate who was a hippie, and I was not. I came here with short hair, and he turned the front yard into corn and squash, and I was like, what are you doing? You can't do that. The landlord's going to freak out. And he just did it anyways. And all the neighbors, again, they came up and they're like, that's really cool what you guys are doing. And we couldn't do it in the backyard because the south-facing was in the front yard. So we ended up growing a full garden the next year, and we had lots of people stop and ask us like, oh, how did you do this? Like, this looks really nice. And it really, I was not expecting the corn thing to happen the way that it did, but it really turned out to be a bonding thing. And my neighborhood actually never, a long time ago, they would have barbecues every summer, and they stopped doing that. And because they all came around our house with the chickens and the corn and the squash and everything, we actually started doing that again. And I got to meet a lot of my neighbors, who were actually some of the teachers at my school, and it was really a cool bonding experience for me. So I just wanted to let you guys know some of the other sides of it. But yes, I don't think roosters should be allowed. They're annoying. Thank you.
Anyone else?
H. Veritol, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. March 12th, Mr. Stonehouse raised a good point that from now on, contractors should come to us with multi-dimensional drawings. Such illustrations may have spared us your fiasco at Founder's Landing. Of course, this wouldn't be necessary if you could relate a site plan to the real world like planners did effectively centuries before this technology surfaced. What an irony to happen across the most fitting quote from Frederick Law Olmsted in a book called "A Clearing in the Distance." It reads, "I have all my life been considering distant effects and always sacrificing immediate success and applause to that of the future." Over a century ago, he saw such wonder in Prescott Isle Park. He recommended to, quote, "preserve it, treasure it as little altered as may be for all time." He foresaw Prescott Isle Park as the crown jewel of our city, and from that point on, lo and behold, to present day, Prescott Isle remains our crown jewel. His vision is in stark contrast to that of Mr. Ryan, who on February 21st uttered that he's, quote, "not really concerned with 50 years in the future, but he is concerned about right now." March 12th, Mr. Ryan opted not to respond to this statement. We can therefore conclude that he either lacks vision or he sees himself as too good to respond. The latter may explain why he sits sideways during public comment, refusing to face the citizen like only one member before him, Mike Coyne. We could surmise over the course of many meetings why, of all the members who've sat here, only those two would face perpendicular to the lectern. At least they listened, so it isn't as important which way they face. It's the potential havoc they wreak that ought to concern the public, and it does. People just throw their hands up, not knowing what to do, short of raising money for lawsuits in which you've used their own tax dollars to fight against them to protect your interests under a legal system that's stacked in favor of big money. March 12th, Mr. Ryan further stated that this board isn't here to respond to the Marina people, after two dozen of them attended the meeting to show support for the renovation. The item was improperly listed on the agenda as a presentation. It read "Prescott Isle Concerned Citizens." The word Marina appeared nowhere in the description. Had you listed the item under business, more individuals could have spoken and would have received their due responses during the ensuing discourse. This is how the system is designed to work. Those who aren't here to respond are asked not to show up at all. Also on March 12th, while Mr. Kivala was criticized for his tactless remark of February 21st, he held his hand over his mouth to hide his laughter. Other times, he's worn his pompous grin as if comments were not to be taken seriously despite their credibility, which remain on record and are easily retrievable to his detriment. A brief description of a state representative's job is to create legislation for the matters of energy, immigration, employment, healthcare, agriculture, and rural development, meet with constituents, amend the state constitution, select House leadership, and to create state budgets. One of the key requirements typed in large letters is to listen to concerns. For 13 years, I've advocated for the establishment of a mechanism that allows for the proper dissemination of credible public input at this lectern. Your failure to do so, even in a life and death situation, John, will forever mar your public record. The claim that Great Lakes are unforgiving and that users are accountable for the dangers is a prime example of using a true statement to hide the truth. You knew full well that a man-made invisible killer lurks near those rocks. Even a prudent swimmer, who's accounting for the mightiness of a Great Lake, cannot be prepared. You realize it's there, but the unsuspecting visitor hasn't a clue. In my opinion, you're negligent because you failed to guard the beach even after the sterner warning you received after the first 2010 drowning. This allegedly contributed to a second death. So long as you continue your silence, John, this logic ought to be tried in a courtroom. You have no business accepting any reward for a public safety program, not when you ignored advice that likely would have spared those lives. Instead, you sat here snickering, maybe not on that issue, but just for the sake of humiliating a citizen and despite the loss of a human life.
Thank you, Mr. Veritol. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Bob O'Neil, 1700 Harborview Drive. I want to thank the city commission for the opportunity to be a city planner, and it was a great opportunity. And any of the new city planning commissioners that are down there, if they, once they get into the job, they realize the, how rewarding it is, and anybody else that's ever interested in getting on, it is one of the most rewarding things I've ever done. To be part of what happened in, over the city in the past six years of me sitting there, seeing things develop the way we foresaw it and coming to fruition is just, leaves you in awe. I mean, it's, I think our city is on the right track. The planning commission has worked very hard, as you all know, and to get to the point where it is now, it's getting even better. Things that are coming up from the planning commission that I started working on and I can't work on any longer, I wish I could, but are going to make it even better. Like the land development code. It's making the job for the BZA even easier and easier. We don't even have a meeting coming up this next month because there's no business on it. And that's because of things that the planning commission has done to make it more suitable for the citizens of Marquette to comply with their building and prospective building in the city. And it's been very rewarding, as I said, and I do want to thank each and every one of you for tolerating and allowing us to do what we've done and following a lot of our recommendations. But it's been a sheer pleasure, so thank you.
Thank you, and thanks again, Bob, for your service. Anyone else wishing to address the commission? All right, seeing no one else, next up is closed session. Do we have a motion to go into closed session? Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll move that we go into closed session pursuant to MCL 15.268 (E) to consult with our attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in conjunction with the pending case of Peterson v. the city of Marquette, due to the reason that an open meeting would, might have a detrimental financial effect on the litigating or settlement position of the city of Marquette.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have support? Commissioner Ryan?
Support the motion.
Any comment? Commissioner Neme?
No, I think the reason the closed session speaks for itself.
No comment.
Any other comments? Seeing none?
We need a roll call.
Roll call vote. City clerk?
Mayor Protem DePietro?
Yes.
Commissioner Neme?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Stenaj?
Yes.
Commissioner Schneider?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
And Mayor Kivala?
Yes. All right. Yes. All right.
All right, we're back in session from our closed session. Do we have any motions after a closed session?
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint three members from the commission to attend the mediation with Mr. Peterson and counsel on, is it June 29th, June 29th, 2012?
I'll support the motion.
Okay, do we want to specify the three commissioners? I'd so be willing to volunteer.
I would be willing to allow the mayor to appoint them.
Okay.
I concur.
All right. Do we have a second, I guess, to the motion? You seconded the motion, any discussion? All in favor say yes.
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 Opposed? Okay. I'll appoint myself and Commissioner Neme and Commissioner Stonehouse to serve that role on June 29th. So, all right, next up, comments from city commissioners. Commissioner Neme?
I have nothing further, Your Honor.
Commissioner Schneider?
I know it's been a long night and I'll keep this brief. I'm hoping the audience are watching at home. Saturday night, no, nothing about chickens this time, except for those who weren't willing to get in the ring or drive down to Esconaba with me. This last Saturday, some friends and I went down to Esconaba to see a derby, a roller derby match between the Esconaba Rolling Hellcats and the Kingsford Crush. It was absolutely fantastic event. It was attended by 500-plus people. Great, great turnout. And I'm hoping that the city of Marquette can take on a roller derby team. I was really excited to see how much support there was down there, and I think we can support one here. So if anybody at home watching or any of the commissioners know anybody who might be interested, please have them get in touch with me or City, or there's a conversation going on on Facebook. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner St. Ange?
Nothing to your add.
Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to hit on a couple things for the residents of Marquette that as of today, Monday, March 26th, the compo site is now open. Monday and Wednesdays from 3:00 to 7:00. Driving by there around 10:30 this morning, I seen about eight or nine bags trying to get into the gate. That does open at 3:00. But this is one of the public's more favorite is Tuesday, April 17th, the household rubbish drop-off site will be open. And usually we have a good attendance during this time, so clean out your garages and basements and get ready for that date. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
I was just going to mention that, I guess several months ago now, this commission was looking at issues related to the medical marijuana situation. And I think we made it very clear that it was not our role to get involved in whether or not, you know, medical marijuana was appropriate, but rather to deal with the fact that when you're distributing marijuana in a community, it does create a number of other issues. I still believe that's true, and I think we saw an instance of what happened in Munising just a couple of weeks ago where a pretty serious crime was committed. I can't, you know, I have no details about it other than what I see in the media, but obviously there was a marijuana connection. And I think this is the kind of thing we were concerned about. I think we kind of put it on the back burner because the state was looking at the issue and there were other things that were happening. But I do think it's something that, you know, if the state doesn't come forward, that we have to look at. You know, this, this does affect communities. We can't change the law, but we can take steps to make sure that, that others in the community are not negatively impacted by allowing this drug, which is still prohibited by the federal government, to be distributed and the way it's distributed. So I think it's a serious concern. And I think what happened in Munising is, is a pretty clear example of that. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Nothing, Your Honor, but thank you.
Thank you. I have nothing either. It's been a long night, so. City manager?
I have nothing either, Your Honor. Thank you.
All right. With that, we're adjourned.